All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call this regular session of the Tiger 12 and School Board to order at 6:32 PM. For the audience awareness, we did meet in work session prior to this meeting at 4:30. That meeting ran a little bit late, so you will see some board members finishing their dinner at the beginning portion of this meeting. The work session was on our strategic plan, which will be unveiled to the community very shortly. Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agendas presented.
I second.
Motion was made by Director Jaime since seconded by Director Sershmead. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna give a little, there's a delay on the Zoom, so we're gonna give Director Lynn an opportunity on all of our votes and discussion. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, we'll move to recognition and good news. Twolton Metro Club, quality Spanish Hispanic heritage activities with presenter Lisa Burton. Welcome.
Okay, good evening, everybody. This evening, in honor of our Hispanic community members and in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, students from Twolty Middle School, Tigard and Twolton Metro chapters will share what they are learning and planning this school year. And we'll start with Twolton Middle School. If you could all share your names first and then show what you're doing.
Hi, my name is Scarlett.
I'm Ashley.
My name is Tammy. I will be presenting my poem, Soy de. Soy de fiestas hasta las una de la madrugada. De orégano y sempasuchi. Soy de risas y felicidad y de divertirme. Soy de árboles muy verdes, de música mexicana. Soy de helado en el verano, soy de Juise y David y de ir a Eugene en Navidad. Soy de mucho amor y también de cuando mis padres no tenían mucho cuando fueron jóvenes. De tacos y tamales, soy de Dia de los Muertos. Soy de mi mamá y papá, soy de querer ser actor. Soy de fiestas hasta la una de la madrugada.
I am Ashley, I'll be sharing my soy de poem. Soy de una casa de gritos de familia. De un país con una variedad de árboles y personas amables. Soy de morisqueta y chocolate caliente y de los pasteles caseros que hace mi mamá. Soy de patinar en la noche y de escuchar música mientras me duermo. Soy de Sofía, de Lily y de mi hija adoptada, que es lo que dicen mis padres de Lily. Soy de cuando mis padres me llevan al río y cuando me lastimo con las piedras debajo del agua. Soy de conchas y café, también soy de cuando me junto con mi primo favorito. Soy de mi familia y de mi futuro, soy de una casa llena de gritos y familia.
Hi, I'm Scarlett, I'm gonna be presenting my poem. Soy de una familia increíble y llena de amor, de una tierra lluviosa y muy húmeda. Soy de sueños y llantos y de apapachos. Soy del árbol de uvas y durazno en mi yarda, de escuchar Romeo Santos. Soy de ir a acampar en la lluvia, soy de Gilmar y Núñez y de ir a la misa todos los domingos. Soy de una familia muy fuerte y con mucho amor y también de llamadas de malas noticias y muertes constantemente. De tamales con arroz en leche, también de recuerdos tristes de la muerte de mis abuelos. Soy de Dios, soy de querer ir a Harvard Med School, soy de una familia increíble y llena de amor.
Did you have questions? For the quality students or? So tell us about, those were your poems that you wrote in your class?
Yes.
Yes.
In class.
And what is the name of your class?
And then Spanish. Spanish?
Yeah.
And we'll get a translation for you, but they're absolutely beautiful.
I was gonna say, I haven't taken Spanish since college, but I thought I heard, I'm from Ice Cream in the Summer. Is that right? Did I hear that? Very nicely done. Board members, comments or questions?
Oh, I just wanna say thank you for being here and bringing your poems to us. Really appreciate it. Say hi during this phone break from us because without her, this wouldn't be possible. So thank you to her and so proud of you all.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, and we have one more thing we would like to share.
About our heritage class.
Yeah.
Being in this class, in the Spanish heritage class helps us because being bilingual is a very helpful thing, especially when it comes to getting into college or getting a scholarship. It also helps with getting good jobs, such as being a translator. This class is very important to us because I feel comfortable expressing myself in my second language.
My Spanish class is also very fun and exciting. My Spanish class is one of the classes I look most forward to during the day. Something that also helps is having a great teacher like Ms. Bonberg. Ms. Bonberg makes her Spanish class really fun by giving us treats and prizes that motivate us to do better in our work and studies.
Very nice. Well, the other thing you should keep in mind, being bilingual is not just great to be a translator. Bilingual teachers are in very high demand right now. A lot of districts across the state are trying to hire them, so you should consider that when you're thinking about your future. But thank you very much for coming to the board meeting this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And don't go anywhere, because we'll want a picture with them, right?
She's on.
Okay, hello, my name is Justo Hernandez O'Hara, and I'm the Metro President.
I'm Asrin Sanchez, Vice President of Metro.
My name is Henry Castillo and I am Metro Officer.
Okay, we wanna start off by saying we are thrilled to be here today and by sharing some of the goals we have for Metro this year. The officers tonight decided we want this, the club to be a safe, supportive and educational place for art members and community, to have a space where to express ourselves and our opinions and that we are here to support each other when not a lot of people can understand our struggles and challenges. So inform our community about our culture, such as Cinco de Mayo's, Mount Mexico's Independence Day, but it's the victory over the Second French Empire of the Battle of Boylan. To educate our members on the importance of attending class, what their options are after high school and that there are beneficial classes at THS that will gladly support them.
So for Hispanic Heritage Month, we look forward to displaying from school with traditional artifacts. We encourage our members to bring items that would like to be displayed. We've got items from Guatemala, Mexico and other countries, along with tickets during both lunches to have a fun way to introduce others into our community. We also be hosting a dance on the 26th of this month to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month with Tots in High School, encouraging people to wear their boots and hats until you're ready to dance all night to traditional Hispanic music. I've been on fundraisers selling traditional food every Friday. We have sold food that we gather, chata, churros and traditional candy so far. Along with selling during our lunches, we were able to put music to show a bit of more of our culture, pride and joy. The fundraiser, we plan to use the money for activities and field trips throughout the year.
An example of an activity that we're really excited to have soon is sugar skull decorating. It is typical for the day of it is typical for the day of the dead in Mexico to place sugar skulls representing departed loved ones placed on the altar. Our goal is to remember our loved ones that have passed away, especially through these past few years. We plan to set up the altar with flowers and open it up to everyone to send us or bring photographs of people they want to remember.
Some other things we hope to accomplish this year is helping those students who arrive from other countries, specifically from those students who come from Spanish-speaking countries. Members who sign up can help these students guide them, to give them a friendly place to look in the halls and show them around the school where adults that are bilingual are located and helps in events that are happening around the school. Thus, we decided to have our second meeting each month will be hosted in Spanish to include our members but also to bring us closer to our language. Acknowledging that not everyone, not all our members speaks Spanish, we will have slides on the projector in English so everyone can follow along.
So our future events this year will be cultural night in Metro Atlanta. We're super excited to share our culture with our community and to learn more about other cultures in our community as well. Although this year will be fun and a collection of educational activities that Metro will be able to accomplish to support the Tiger High School students.
Awesome. Thank you very much for coming, board members. Questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, early on, you said that Metro was a self, a safe, supportive and educational place. And I was just thinking, we spent an hour and a half working on a strategic plan and that's it right there, is we want a safe, supportive, educational place for all of our students. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you for having us.
I wanna say thank you and I hope that you understand how lucky you are because, you know, growing up myself, I didn't have a mention till I got to college. And, you know, that affinity space that you have created for yourselves or that is created is one that is very important, one that will help you succeed, one that will create lifelong friends for you all, so Chicanos power.
Dr. Lynn, do you wanna go?
Yes, I would just say congratulations to you on your leadership. I mean, it's really impressive to be able to present to this group in more than one language, but also to show the powerful leaders that you are in planning these activities for your school. Very proud of you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just really echo what all of my colleagues have said and for all of you to bring these parts of yourselves to us and share those with us, whether it's through the poetry and what you're doing throughout the year. I think it was actually this meeting last year where I fully broke into tears. Let's not replay that to YouTube, but my son is also leaving for college, so it was like a whole thing, but it was just, it's very poignant how, I mean, it takes a lot of vulnerability and a lot of courage and a lot of pride in what you're doing and who you are to come and share that. And so I just wanna acknowledge that. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for being leaders in this district and for coming to share your voices with us. We appreciate hearing from you. Right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, hi, um, we're really excited to be here and we're really grateful for you guys to take time out of your day to listen to our presentation. And my name is Joyce Gomez and I'm President of Metro.
Hello, my name's Alia Delao and I'm Vice President of Metro this year. So our presentation today is, one thing we're trying to leave right now to start off our year is Hispanic Heritage Month. And like this month has been so far, we're trying to make it a good time where we get to celebrate and show our school and the rest of our community, like the diverse Hispanic community that we're in and like celebrate and show everyone the like achievements that everyone has like achieved. Whether it's like either famous people and then also just people and students around our community.
Just to like acknowledge some important dates of the month, Hispanic Heritage Month goes from September 15th to October 15th. And we take this month, this month to honor all the Hispanic countries that gained their independence, such as September 15th, we celebrate Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras and Nicaragua. September 16th, we celebrate Mexico's independence. September 18th, we celebrate Chile and then September 21st, we celebrate Belize.
Um, this, like, I think last year, one of the projects that we did was we had like portraits of like famous inspirational people from the Hispanic culture. I remember I, I did Sessad Chavez and I was like, it was a cool mural, like a painting I did. And hopefully we bring that back this year, but we don't wanna only dedicate Hispanic like culture and stuff to only this month, but try and carry it on through the rest of the year, but definitely try and make it a spotlight this year. These are some of the like, like famous people that we kinda had that stood out to us. I think some of us chose these like as important people that we've seen in our community, like in society. I know Rita Moreno, she's like an actor and she, one of the shows I watched that she's in, like about a military woman and then how she's a mother of like from Cuba, I believe. And just like her character, even though like obviously that's not her real, the real person she is, but the person she portrays is like really inspirational, is a strong woman, carrying her children over here. These were just some of the other important people that we saw and we really thought.
Um, and then we also did a little research about some inventions made by Hispanics. I didn't know some, I didn't know about some of these until like I researched about it and I was surprised, like colored television, artificial hearts and like beauty blenders and then like spicy hot cheetos.
I mean, these are like really like big things that we have in our life right now. And it's really cool to see how Hispanic culture is like involved into it and how we can like keep like working towards like cool, like really cool things like this. I mean, I know personally, I really, we're in like programs like to work towards college and a lot of people from our family, like we're first gens trying to go into college and it's like really important to see like all our, like the culture that we're in, all the things that are like possible for us.
And then to celebrate our Hispanic Heritage Month, we'll be having a week and we've had, we have some plans at Tots in High School. Last year, we did a Somos Unidos banner, which is in the first photo you could see in the background. Everyone, they painted their hand and they put their handprint on the, on the banner just to show how like we're all united and connected and we're a family, we're a community together. And then for Thursday, the 13th, we are gonna be selling fan buse, conchas in the morning while students are arriving to school. Just as a little like welcome back from Wednesday, like a little treat in the morning to get, just so they could have something to snack on. And then that same day during lunch, we're gonna be having a Latino trivia just to see like how much do people really know about the Hispanic culture and like what new things they could find out. And then on Friday, the 14th of October will be our last day, we'll be having like a Hispanic celebration. During lunchtime, we'll be having face painting as well as a pinata. And then we'll also be having like music and like a small baile, just to like make people excited for the weekend, a good like, it's a good way to end it off.
Yeah, so far, we started off this year with Hispanic Heritage Month. We had a couple meetings and one of them was like a craft day where we were all just like came together, listened to music. We all did like crafts and it was cool seeing all the like, the community together. A lot of our students, they're not English speakers and we have a couple that don't speak Spanish. There's some people that aren't necessarily part of the Hispanic community, but they still come and join us and like try and like, like be part of it. And I think it's like a really beautiful thing. Hopefully we keep doing more stuff this year and just to try and bring more diversity to our school. Thank you so much for listening to us.
Very nicely done. Thank you for the presentation, colleagues.
I just wanna say that as your first Hispanic elected board member, you can also become a board member too. Just remember that.
We forgot to add you. I'm sorry.
And Pedro, where's the conchas, man? Come on. Oh, okay. No, but thank you to your advisors too because we gotta make sure that we thank them because they, they are behind the scenes, you know, making you guys get together and flourish and they're doing a lot of work behind the scenes. So thank you so much to them too.
Yeah, just sort of replay whatever I said earlier and kind of sit it again here, like it's just so impressive to have you all here and sharing so much about what you're doing and really being such natural leaders and sort of educators in a way already. And I think when you said that there are people that aren't necessarily of Hispanic culture that are coming, I mean, I think that speaks to what you are doing in your school community that people want to learn, want to be a part of community, want to understand maybe what they don't understand. And I think that's really marvelous and important work. So thank you.
Okay. Director Lynn, any comments?
Yes, I would just add to what I said earlier, you know, what you're doing now, these are the building blocks to successful leadership careers later on for you, you know, you'll be superintendents or board members or principals or lawyers. I mean, I'm just, I'm just so impressed with the work that you're doing and I think the work of Metro really adds another level of complexity and importance in terms of understanding the climate and culture and working to improve that on behalf of students. So congratulations once again and I'm very proud of you.
I'll echo my colleagues' comments and say thank you for coming forward and for leading. And I, Vice Chair Irvin's comments resonated with me as well. Like I think it's pretty special that you created both an affinity group for students to be in community with one another, but also a place for your colleagues, your peers to learn and to make friends and to build bridges. That's really special. It speaks to, we had this long meeting before you all came about our strategic plan and one of the things we talked about was climate and culture of a school. That's what you're building. You're building a climate and culture that's inclusive and welcoming for all students and that's pretty special. So thank you. Please join me in congratulating these students.
Director Lynn, in your minutes, and I think Patty shared with you just a minute ago, Hazelbrook and Fowler Middle School could have been here this evening, but they both have events happening October and in November, so that information is shared with you. And I guess if you're able to attend, they're similar to what's happening at all years. We'll take a photo now. You all come up and stand up here.
If you guys have a cool car, we're gonna have a car meet this year, so. How you mean? I mean, even a Honda, it's fine. Like, all cars are, all cars are acceptable.
All right, we'll take a quick picture up front. You all come wrap around here. Everyone take one step right.
To your right. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. With that, I will close recognition and good news and we will go to my favorite part of the evening where we put the students on the spot. Student representative reports. Owen, it looks like you're ready to go first.
Yeah, I'll kick it off. Tigard High School, it has been a very busy last week, a lot of celebration. Just to name a few events that Tigard High hosted, we had Powder Puff. And Powder Puff is where girls play tag football and voice cheerlead. It's awesome, super fun. The seniors unfortunately still won keeping their titles going, but the juniors were close. And then after that, we had our homecoming parade, which was a huge success. I think practically the entire city of Tigard was there. And I think it just warmed my heart going around picking up trash and just kinda seeing the whole community come together. And then we somehow beat Lake Ridge, which is absolutely amazing, keeping our undefeated streak. We also nominated our court, which I think reflected our school's values, which I think is amazing. And then after that, we ended our week with a celebration at our homecoming dance, which was a huge success and congrats for choir for hosting such a great dance.
Everyone was either at the parade or stuck in traffic on Durham Road.
Yeah.
True. Was she key?
Yeah, adding, okay. Adding on to that, more on the club section. Marching band had their first competition on the one day was homecoming. Saturday. So they had their first competition Saturday. I think they scored second in their championship. They have a really cool looking show this year, which is amazing. They also perform during the homecoming parade, but on the club section, we have club rush on the 13th, so all the clubs and the presidents have been working really hard on orienting that and making sure that's happening. We're also doing Halloween whims again this year. And we are also, you know, pretty pumped up to have that happen again since 2020. So it's been a while. The city of Tigard is also hosting the LT Gray Festival on October 15th. And that is going 11 to 6 PM at Dirks and Nature Park.
Not saying?
On the Twolton side of things, we have not had our big week yet, but Hoco is coming up very soon. Our theme was just announced, which would be a decades themed dance. Our spirit weekend assembly is still being planned to this moment, but we're getting there. Our parade is looking on the bright side already with a lot of clubs and community involvement signed up. We've gotten the youth football and almost youth cheer teams to be on the club tour and the parade, which is pretty cool. Inside the school, we have a lot of colleges coming to visit, so a lot of students are missing literature class to go see UW or other local schools that draw a lot of attention from our students. We've had events such as Fall Fest that are going to occur where I've been in the groups and students can come together and carve out pumpkins and have fun with each other. I think it's pretty cool. On the sports time side, our football team is one and one since our last meeting. This is tough. Our soccer teams have not lost since our last meeting and our cross country team is poised for a great TRL meet in upcoming season. And our fall play is now underway. Our seditions are over and parks have been handed out. And like we stated before, Hispanic heritage must come into a close. The decorations in the halls and students know about it through posters and social media posts and we have a culmination event of the Hispanic Celebration Day on Friday.
Oh, what did you say the homecoming thing was?
Decades.
Decades.
Yeah.
All right. What are the seniors?
Seniors are 2000s, which I argued against.
Does that make you feel though that 2000s is now a dress up day in high school? Very cool. Thank you all for the updates. Any questions for the student representatives?
And the Twolton Homecoming is next Saturday, is that correct?
Yeah, Saturday to 22nd. All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to Superintendent and Board Communication, Dr. Ricky Smith.
Thank you, Chair. So just again, light touch, Fowler Middle School will be hosting their first Hispanic Heritage Night this Thursday, October 13th from 5 to 7 and dollar welcome. So please put that on your calendars if time permits. Also, this past week, school-based and cabinet administrators engaged in the first of what will be several classroom walkthrough sessions this year with the University of Washington Center for Educational Leadership Staff. The focus of the walkthroughs is on students gathering observational data about student engagement in lessons that they're being taught that day and then their production of learning as a result of that engagement or lack thereof. Twolton High School, Hazelbrook Middle School and Tigard High Schools offered their schools for this first session where teachers volunteered their classrooms for the lab experience. Each building principal, Tigard, Twolton and Hazelbrook had an instructional problem of practice that they wanted observational data about and hear feedback. Following the walkthroughs, administrators debriefed and analyzed their data. Following the walkthroughs, administrators debriefed and analyzed their data, then provided the building principal with their analysis and recommendations for next steps in addressing the school's problem of practice. I had the opportunity to join the team at Twolton High School as an observer. I was impressed with the depth and breadth of observational and analytical skill demonstrated by our administrators. I anticipate that these skills will deepen as a result of the formative work with the Center for Educational Leadership, which in turn will deepen their analysis and response to eye ready math and reading data K8, high school course completion and student social emotional data, which should result then in academic growth for every student as well as gap closure that exists in TTSD student populations. And then concerning student growth, I end with a recent email received from the daughter of Twolton Elementary Dean Lisa Featherston, Stella Featherston, a recent quality, Twolton High School graduate. And she writes, Dear Dr. Sue, my name is Stella Featherston and I'm a recent graduate from Twolton High School. I'm currently enrolled in the Clark Honor College at the University of Oregon. I was selected to receive the Presidential Award as well as the Summit Scholarship. I wanted to say thank you to the TTSD community for supporting me through my educational career. The teachers at Alberta Rider were amazing. For example, Mr. Salmon really encouraged me to pursue my love of reading and Mrs. Knutson for developing my love for writing. Twolty Middle School is where I started to develop myself as a critical thinker. I would especially like to thank Mrs. Den, Mr. Montplaisir and Mr. Underhill for the lively, critical thinking discussions and engaging classes. As a Twolton High School student, the four years I spent there gave me an incredible opportunity through leadership and vigorous IB classes. Mrs. Lacy, Mr. Egan, Mr. Mooney, Mrs. Baker and Mr. Johnson, along with my other teachers are a strong part of where I am today. Without them, I would not be nearly as educated or prepared for my college career. Thank you, Stella Featherston.
Colleagues, your reports. Director Lynn, would you like to start?
Sure, I just would reiterate what you talked about earlier. Director, I mean, or Chair Bowman, in terms of the strategic planning process and that it's really coming to a close. We had a great session earlier tonight where we had an opportunity to, to think about our goals as a district and how we want to update those to reflect current policy as well as, you know, sort of new issues and concerns facing our students and staff and community. So, we're really excited about that. We're on track to get that done. And looking forward to presenting a draft of that plan to the community group on November 2nd. And then once we get that feedback, the expectation and intention is that we will then move those ideas forward, modify the plan and then present the final plan on November 21st at the school board meeting. So, really excited about the progress we've made so far and thankful to the leadership here in the district for their support. And also, we have to thank, of course, our Point North and Espousal Strategy Partners for their facilitation of the process.
Thank you. Any takers to go next? Dr. Hames.
So, I don't know if you guys know this or not, but I'm apparently a parent band booster now. I was told that at a meeting that I've officially become a booster. I was like, okay, great, great. So, what does that entail? Oh, I gotta donate money. Okay, never mind. I'm out. No, I was just kidding. I went to the band competition as a parent and it was just so amazing. The pageantry that they all produce and our team did, you know, the best that they could. They did so great. It was, it was really awesome. They, they practiced really hard and just makes me want to get involved more. So, if I only had more time, maybe I could clone myself. I could get involved more. But, but no, it was great. And then the other thing is that the, I'm a board member for the Oregon Association of Bilingual Education or for bilingual education. And we are co-hosting the National Association for Bilingual Education here in Portland this coming February 23rd through the 25th. So, make sure that you guys save those dates so that you can come to that conference. And not only that, but we have somehow worked it so that maybe our bilingual program gets featured at the conference. So, maybe, I don't know, Director Rose might know a little bit more about that. But yes, so we'll, we'll keep you guys updated on that.
Well, thankfully, Director Lynn said all the things that I was going to say about the strategic plan piece. So, thank you for that. And it's really exciting just to reiterate the work that we're doing. And I think the plan that along with the community, we will be creating and, and building together, I think will really be representative of who we are and where we want to go. Let's see, I also was at the homecoming parade, which was, and I think I saw both of our Tigerd reps there. And it was so great. And I feel, I know that we had one last year, but it just felt, I mean, there were just so many kids involved and so many community members that are just excited to have these things back. So, that was really fun. And then went to the game, which was all great. And just sort of love the spirit of the student section and just, it's just a really good group of kids. So, that was really fun. Let's see, Art in the Burbs, which is a foundation for Tiger Twolton Schools event, which is the best event, is October 22nd and 23rd. And so, that is where it's a jury selection of local artists and craftspeople selling incredible stuff. So, it's a great time to, I think I'm going to get gifts for other people for things. And then I just end up buying all the things for me. But it is wonderful and that money the foundation earns and fundraises for throughout the year is turned around and given to all of our schools and grant money. And this is specific to art education. So, highly recommend heading out to Art in the Burbs and that is the weekend of the 22nd.
All, I was going to talk about Art in the Burbs too, but I'll just mention it's a great place to go Christmas shopping if you're so inclined or birthday shopping, if like me, you have every member of your family has their birthday in November. The other thing is, not last week, but the week before, I had the opportunity to go tour the new Art Rutkin School, still under construction. It looks like a school. It doesn't have the stuff inside yet, but the building's there, the windows are there. You get a real sense of the lay of the building. And the article that you may have seen this in the Times covered it very nicely, but didn't, I think, gush enough about the amazing beauty of that building. The amount of natural light coming through windows, the use of wooden beams and cedar softening. It is a beautiful, beautiful building. And the view from the principal's office is okay. The view from the teacher's lounge is just the most breathtaking thing you've ever seen. So, and then the library, the student library is going to be just an extraordinary room with it stepping down with huge windows looking out over this wonderful view over the valley. It is going to be an amazingly beautiful school and a great place to learn. And I'm really excited to see it as it gets through its finishing stages in the next few months.
Awesome. Just a couple of things I wanted to share. I'm a frequent peruser of OSA rankings. Tigerd is ranked sixth in the state. Twolton is ranked seventh in the state. So, we're very close there. Girl soccer, Twolton's ranked fourth in the state, which hearkens back to my time at TUHS where we were like back to back to back state champions for girl soccer. So, great athletic achievement happening. Another quick, just a quick note I wanted to share with folks. We often, we hear from folks who are upset often. And sometimes we hear from people who are really happy. And I got a text from a parent of a Tigerd High School student, a freshman, who went to the homecoming dance in a group of LGBT students. It was all LGBT students. And they were wearing what they wanted and they went with whoever they wanted. And the parent said that, the parent had some nervousness about this, about what their experience might be. And she said that it was an amazing experience, not a single negative look, not a single word under someone's breath. The students had a ton of fun and she was so grateful that that was possible. And I told her, I don't know that that was possible 10 years ago when I was in high school or in 2010 when I graduated from high school. So, kudos to the students at Tigerd for creating that kind of a space and to the administration teachers who have worked so hard to create that kind of inclusive and welcoming environment. It made me really happy. It made my weekend and I wanted to share with you all too. That's all I got. So, any other last comments? With that, we will move to public comment. Patty, can you confirm? No one signed up for public comment? All right. With that, we will move to reports and discussion. We'll start with item A, Policy ACC Dataset Revision with presenter Dr. Ricky Smith.
And Patty, if we can get it just a wee bit larger. I have my copy in front of me. There we go. Thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Bowman and Directors. This evening is just a very brief touch, as I have already subjected you to an hour and a half plus of review of the equity audit data. But this has to do with a format check with all of you. And so, wanted to just briefly show, show you the format for this report for this year. Seek any questions or input that you have regarding any final tweaks, if there are any. And if not, we will use this format going forward into future years. So, the, the report starts off with an executive summary, which you see here. And what I want to bring to your attention is that Patty, if you'll scroll down to the ACC Accountability Report. Again, as this is a reflection of a policy ACC relative to educational equity and racial justice. Patty, just a little bit more of a scroll, please. Under the accountability section, you see data points one through six, which are explicitly called out in the policy to track with data that can be quantified year over year. And so, the way in which this report has been organized is that we take each one of those data points. So, I'll reference point number one, academic outcomes. And so, what we first do is we present to you the data that we have, the Oregon Statewide Assessment System summary data. Patty, if you'd scroll down, please. And here you see the graph from 2017, 18 to 2021, 22, which is our latest dataset. The next dataset that you have there is relative to English language benchmark proficiency by race and ethnicity. Please continue to scroll. You see the math proficiency over that same time period. And Patty, once again, and you also see it broken out by ethnicity. Please also remember that there is a gap in that data due to the pandemic when the test was not given. And then the next section, and this is true for each of the data points, just a little scroll up, just a little bit, thank you. You have recommendations. So, data, recommendations, recognition of the gaps and next steps that we will build off of this year and then assess at the end of this year's and report back relative to these data sets. And I'll scroll down just a little bit further. You can see here the four-year graduation rate summary. We'll finish this section out. And again, here, continue to scroll, Patty. Thank you. You see the four-year graduation rate by program over that same time period. Continue to scroll, Patty. Thank you. You see it by ethnicity. And then again, continue, Patty. You see it relative by high school. And then again, you see the recommendations. Then we go to ninth grade on track summary. And again, you can see the data sets repeat themselves in terms of all students and then by demographic. Next, continue. Thank you. Continue. Yep. And continue to scroll, please. And then by, by high schools and then the dataset, then the recommendations relative to that dataset. And then we go to data point number two, which is enrollment in advanced courses and programs. And so, I will pause there and see if there are any questions or revisions that the board has relative to the format of this report and the data sets used. I really appreciate all the data. I'm wondering if it might be useful to include some discussion of the size of each of these groups. Because I know, for example, our the, the N, as it were, for our Pacific Islanders or our Native American populations, indigenous populations versus a, our populations of all of the others, just so that folks can see. Because some of those are very volatile and it would be useful to know this one has a very small number of students. And so, that contributes to that volatility. The larger groups should be more stable. Thank you, Director Zershmead. Yes, that is something that we can take back to Paul, who manages our dataset and see if there is a way of, at the front end of the reports, because each of these data sets is predicated based on that same student population, populations. And so, we certainly have an introductory, if you will. Here is the current population for these data sets.
I just want to say thank you for your flexibility and the team's flexibility in iterating this document. This is exactly what I think the vision of the board was when we passed Policy ACC. Because whoever future board members are, and I hope that they will take this seriously. This is the single point of longitudinal data where all the measures that we say we care about are disaggregated and tracked year over year. So, I just think this is a really rare document in education policy and gives us in TTSD a real opportunity to tie our data to our practices, like we talked about in strategic plan. So, I'm really pleased with this document and appreciate all the work that went into it.
Thank you, Chair. The thrust here, I think, that is important and is to highlight what is called out first relative to Policy ACC, which is academic outcomes for every student. Because that is our business. Our business is to instruct all students in the core instruction, math, science, language arts and social studies. The two areas, the three areas that are assessed in this state are math, science and reading. And so, it is, while that is important, it is also important that we, we take a look at all of the sub pieces to that, which is also ninth grade on track graduation as well as how are students progressing K8. And then into, and, and hopefully at some point, we will be able to access through the state post-secondary success data. There was a point in time, many, many years ago, almost 20 now, where that data was available. That is no longer. But that is something that we continue to push on the state because we want to know how our students progress. While we love emails such as Stella Featherston's tonight, which gives us anecdotal data, we, we are looking for quant data as well. And then you also notice at the end of the report, there is an appendix. And we will continue to add to that appendix supporting documents, including the qualitative data that has been collected from our affinity groups, from our parent groups and from others that flesh out why the data, potentially the quantitative data may look the way that it does. So, that continues to be a work in progress. My last point here this evening is the fact that when you take a look nationally at district equity reports, typically these are documents that are 75, 80 and sometimes 100 pages long. And while they may be technically useful to internal district work, I, I fail to see how they adequately communicate to the community. And so, we have worked with due diligence to try to keep this to no more than 20 pages as this will be posted on our website so that the entire community has access to it. If there are no other questions, that ends my report.
All right. Thank you very much. And we will move to report and discussion, item B, First Reads of Board Policy. Director Ebert, I believe, is with us on Zoom.
Good evening, everyone. I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you and see you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we have this evening, the first of approximately 30 board policies that came in the latest update in late August. The Board Policy Committee has met once and got through a good chunk of these that we're bringing to this evening. And we'll have to meet again. We have a date on the calendar to meet again and hopefully get through the rest of these. And I will be coming to coming with multiple board policies and ARs the next few months until we can get through this update. So we will start tonight with BBBA Board Member Qualifications. This is an optional policy that we do currently have. So we looked at the updates that were presented from OSBA. And you can see the changes that were made. Are there any questions?
So the only substantive change is basically saying if we move to a zoned election, which we are not currently in, then the people who run for those seats would have to live in the zone?
That's my understanding, and we added a explanation below.
We are not currently a zoned district, but if we were, then we would have to.
Align to the state law.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, I put that in the comments, too, that this does align with statute.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right, next policy is BCF Advisory Committees to the Board. This is also an optional policy that we do have. And the additional language is adding the Equity Advisory Committee language that has recently passed in in statute. Any questions there? Unless one of you lets me know, I'm gonna.
This one's pretty straightforward. It's just. Yeah, state law says we have to have this language, so we can have this language.
Seems all right.
Okay. All right, next policy is CB Superintendent. And we have language updates that are in this policy. And this also is due to recent new statute language around contracts. This is a highly recommended policy that we currently do have. Any questions?
Looks like just one added sentence, so. Good for me.
In addition, CBC Superintendent's Contract in the same realm, this is a highly recommended policy that we currently do have. And the current language in this policy is due to the statute changes.
And the text that is highlighted in yellow is text that we do currently have in our policy. But it is bracketed in how it came to us from OSBA, so we could remove it if we wanted to, but we do currently have it. So it's board's discretion as to whether what we do with it.
Either way, it's a May. So it's not binding us to anything.
Exactly. That's why we had it in, I think.
Any prep, any preference? Do you have preference?
My preference would be to keep it in since we've had it in.
Okay, works for me.
All right, so we'll take the brackets brackets out.
And the the new gray is those are, that's from state law, right? The 12-month notice of termination, that's a recently passed state law. Okay.
Yes.
Great. Just as we may not direct our superintendent to do something that breaks the law.
Seems like a good rule.
It's a kind of a good rule.
All right, our next one this evening is DBEA Budget Committee. This is language updates that are highly recommended. This policy is highly recommended. And our policy committee added the definition of a lector in the policy, as well as OSBA added other changes. You can see the bold and underlined is what we added. We pulled some language from the past version two budget committee policy that we currently have.
Okay, so technical question here. Oh, sorry. There's a bit of a lag, Debbie, that's why it's a little, sorry about that. At least one member of the Budget Committee must be a member of the District's Educational Equity Advisory Committee. Will this be true upon adoption?
I believe it will be true as soon as we have identified the people of our EAC.
Because what I don't want to do is adopt a policy that we're not in compliance with. I know the state has given a runway to make this happen. But that's my one flag is the law says a member of the Each Advisory Committee has to be on the Budget Committee. I think it says it's not until there's a vacancy or something, Director Morgan.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
When a vacancy comes up, it must be given to one of the
The members.
Members, yeah.
So if there's a way that could, we could reflect that here. I just don't want to write or adopt something that we are not in compliance with. Director Moore.
I don't, I don't remember the timing of the the Equity Advisory Committee, but likely we won't be convening the Budget Committee until at the earliest the winter and formally in the spring.
Do we have any vacancies on our current Budget Committee?
That's a good question. I I don't think we do this year, but we will do, we will after this year.
Okay. Yeah, so that's just my one flag is if there's a way we could maybe adjust the language, or I don't think we want to delay adoption of the policy. But I just want to work that that piece out, but that's my only flag.
Do you want me to add when when a vacancy becomes available? Opens up or becomes available?
Yeah, I think if you look at the policy for the Equity Advisory Committee, it's it has some good language on there about when a vacancy becomes available, I believe. So, yeah, you should probably frame it that same way.
Yeah, if that works, then that would work for me. Or we might be able to say at the end of that sentence that starts with at least one member, we could say in accordance with state law. Because if state law does provide us that option of a vacancy, then we're still in compliance in accordance with state law. So that would be my maybe one. I'm not sure.
Chair Bowman.
Yep.
We do have one vacancy, Jimmy Brown. His term expired in 2022, so.
Okay. And he may be, well, what what we can cover that. Okay. Okay.
So it sounds like we have
We have an opportunity.
Have the committee in compliance with this by the time the committee is formed, so I think we're gonna be all right.
Yep.
Okay, so do we want to leave the language as it is? Would you like me to add?
I think we can leave it as is, but if we get towards February and we should just have it circle back to make sure that we're going to be in compliance with it when we start the budget season.
But wouldn't it be just suffice, just suffice to add within accordance to the law, if that's okay? I think that that would.
Yeah. If possible, for the next draft, Debbie, let's just add in accordance with state law at the end of that sentence. Because I assume this will be coming for second reading at our next board meeting and adoption, at which point we will not have an Equity Advisory Committee member on the Budget Committee. So, okay.
So that's right before the footnote number one? Is that what you would add that? At the end of that sentence that is footnote footnoted with number one? The sentence that begins at least one member of the Budget Committee must be a member of the District's Educational Equity Advisory Committee, comma, in accordance with state law?
Yes, yes.
Did you get that, Director Ebert?
And then just a question, we are striking and vice chair from the organizational meeting. I was a bit confused by that. Is it because the presiding officer is just for that specific meeting? And you don't need a vice chair because you're electing a presiding officer? And the presiding officer presides over the meeting of electing the chair and vice chair? Is that kind of the thinking?
I believe so.
Okay.
Because if the presiding officer is there, we don't need a vice chair. If the presiding officer isn't there, they're not going to be elected presiding officer.
Director Moore, do we not, do we not elect a vice chair of the Budget Committee?
I was trying to remember that myself. It's never become an issue without presiding officers. So I don't think we have in recent years elected a vice chair.
And I I think I remember now, this is a matter of the shall. So we shall do the presiding officer. We can do the vice chair if we want to, but the shall is
Just the presiding officer.
Is the presiding, right.
Works for me. No other questions for me, colleagues? And Director Lynn, anything from you?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Okay, mark on that one. Next one is EH Records and Data Management. This is an optional policy that we felt we should have. And so we agreed that this policy and the AR would be helpful. It's aligned to the state statute and the AR will need to be approved by the cabinet, and then that will be on the second reads as an FYI on the 24th.
The AR will be part of the second read or just the policy?
The policy will be on the second read, but the also the partnering AR will be there as well for you to see. But that first needs to be approved by cabinet.
Got it.
But we will not approve the AR.
Right.
We're just being notified and then.
Yeah, but the AR is where the meat of this one is. But yeah, that sounds good. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
And along with EH KBA, well with this one, so we put them together, Public Records. These changes offer better alignment to the state statute and the current practice of processing public records requests.
I appreciate these changes. I think there's a lot of confusion with public records. And this expands the definition so we are clear that anything related to the public business that is created is a public record. So I like it.
And there is an AR that accompanies this one as well that you'll see in the next round of second reads. Okay, well, that's it for this week. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Director. Okay, with that, we will close the Reports and Discussion section of the agenda. I'll do a quick check. Are we good to keep going into action items or do we want to recess? Okay, we're going to move into action items. We'll start with policy ACV AR as we were just discussing, discussing the Each slash Educational Equity Advisory Committee alignment with presenters Director Himes and Director Men.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. It is my pleasure and hopefully Director Lynn can chime in here, too. But it is my pleasure to bring this forward to you. As you all know, when the Ish Committee was created or let me see, I have it here, the Anti-Bias Education Accountability for Implementation Solutions and Healing Plans that are developed by each school. The Anti-Bias Incidents and Hate Speech Oversight Committee oversees them, right? And so with that, Director Lynn and and myself have presided over that committee. Now, there was an introduction of a new law, as you all know, that created a an Educational Equity Advisory Committee. So what we did was we went back to our Ish Committee and we asked, would you like to combine both committees and have you be the primary members of the Educational Equity Advisory Committee? And they said yes. And so with that, I am happy to present to you for your consideration the members of the committee that will now form the Educational Equity Advisory Committee. And before I do that, Director Lynn, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
Thank you. So those names are, and please pardon me if I get your, if I mispronounce your name. But we have Jacob de Grau, a parent in our district. Celeste Brandon, also a parent. Brad Dorsey, parent. Henry Castillo, a student. Michael Braxton, parent and slash grandparent. Owen Albert, student. Jonathan Mercado, a student. Gigi Escobar, a staff and administrator, and Naseh Lin, a student. And those are the members of the Ish Committee that will now be our standing members for the Equity Advisory Committee. And those are the members that I'd like to present for you for your consideration.
Thank you, Directors, for your work on this. And I believe statute requires the superintendent to be involved in that selection. So Dr. Ricky Smith, do you want to speak to this at all?
No, thank you. It's just just my gratitude to the Each Committee for their willingness to roll into this expanded role that will help them to continue to do the work that they have been doing relative to oversight of bias acts and and hate speech. But we'll expand it now relative to the breadth that is available to them relative to academic and social emotional equity. And as a finer point, neither myself nor board members may be standing members on this committee, which may is a departure from the way in which we we structured the Each Committee. But we are certainly available to the committee as technical supports as as needed. So again, simply my thanks and to all of you for continuing to step into these spaces and expand your workload. And we look forward to to great, greater work with you.
Yeah, some of those names have been doing this work in this district for years. So I think that's a great lineup of folks to to continue on in this role.
Could you just, I was trying to keep track of how many names you were reading off? How many people are going to be on this committee?
We currently have nine so far, but then it'll be, we can entertain more numbers at a later point.
Is there a statutory requirement or limit on numbers? There is not. Okay, so we've got some flexibility. Well, kudos to you both and to the TTSD admin team. I know there are school boards across the state who are 10K and above who are struggling with implementation of this. So I'm pleased that we were able to kind of align it with our existing work and keep some of our leaders engaged and also. Kind of align it with their existing work and keep some of our leaders engaged and also get some new people engaged, so this is great. All right.
So with gratitude to the people who have agreed to be on the committee. I move to appoint the nine members named to the Educational Equity Advisory Committee as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made. Motion made by, uh, Director Sershmin, and we'll give it to Director Lynn because I think he probably beat you where he is, it just showed up here later.
That's right.
And with that, will, uh, is there any? Is there any further discussion?
I just want to thank the, the, the members of this committee, um, as well, I'm sorry about this delay. Um, but we had a really thoughtful, rich discussion. Uh, with students and parents and, uh, who were part of the, uh, original Ish Committee about. The transition, uh, and I, I think they were very thoughtful, very reflective. On what their new roles responsibilities would be and willing to continue to do the good work. Of advancing our equity mission of the district, so I just want to say thank you to, to them. Um, and we're very fortunate to have the folks we have, um, uh, working on behalf of all students in this regard, so thank you.
Director Himes?
And also, uh, not to forget Director Un who is, um, you know, instrumental in doing this work. And just helped, but, uh, Director Lynn and I, uh, a lot, and I'm sure that she's going to continue to help the committee. Going forward and Director Rose as well.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move to a call vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for your work. And with that, we'll move to action item B, Equity Grant Application Approval with presenter, uh, Director Zinnia, Director.
Hi, hello, good evening, um, I'm here to present, um. Did you want to join me? Okay. While our CFO joins us, I'm, I'm, again, uh, grateful for the opportunity to present, um, uh. A, a request for approval for the, uh, grant for ODE. The Department of Equity and Inclusion would like to apply for ODE's culturally specific after-school activities. Uh, the request will pilot expansion of affinity and alliance groups to after-school activity programs. To include peer mentorship programs, partners. Um, eh, from ERCO, Immigrant Refugee Community Organization. Connected to our Pacific Islander Eng- Engagement Program as well as our Greater Middle Eastern Center. The review of the program and engagement for our various affinity alliance groups, as you have saw to, uh, today. Is to expand on, um, partnership with our students. And engagement, um, to support our, um, our, uh, younger grades as well. Um, the amount of the grant, uh, uh, request is for five hundred thousand dollars. Um, the key investments include expansion of our Pacific Islander Community. Um, supports across pre-K twelve, uh, for students and families. Uh, we've had some promising practices and we want to see that, um, headed to the elementary level. We also, um. Have seen some, uh, insights from our affinity and alliance groups related to, um, our Arabic speaking families. And they have shared some feedback around how, um, uh, their needs are, um. Uh, on the rise with the, uh, immigration of our Afghanistan, um, community. And so we wanted to invest and support, uh, them with the contract with GMEC. Um, which is specifically aligned to what the grant is asking for, um, with the total investment of. Um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then current affinity alliance group, uh, materials and staffing stipends for a hundred thousand dollars. And continued supports from our culturally responsive coordinator to support after-school programs. Um, for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the supplementary materials include ODE culturally specific after-school, um, learning program grant ex- uh, explanation. As well as a summary from our GMEC, um, partner and my grant application. And I'm bringing this forward because it, um, it goes over the hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, threshold. And, uh, the policy highlights to have it approved before spending staff time, so here I am. So I have one question for you, so this grant runs for two years. At the end of those two years, are, is it renewable? Do we have to apply for a new one if there is one, if there isn't one? This is actually connected to Essar funds. Okay, so I think the end of, um, that timeframe is two thousand twenty-four. Um, I'm actually looking at this as an opportunity to understand and pilot, um. Uh, an expansion of, I, I think our affinity alliance group that has, um, been very, um. Pivotal in building culture and climate and bringing, um, students in as partners. Um, and as students have highlighted earlier today, um, they've also. Um, noted the impact that their siblings, younger siblings, as well as, um. Uh, students in younger grades have highlighted the need to have some representation connection. And we know that peer, uh, supports have been a pivotal part of, uh, youth growth and, um, development.
Director Hames?
So, um, I think this is great to apply for this, um, to, for this grant. Um, I would like for us to be able to move from applying for grants to. Funding it out of the general fund so that we have that, um. Continu- continuity and sustainability and as we've seen. From countless testimony from students that, you know, affinity groups work. And so if we are centering equity in our strategic plan, we should also center it with our dollars. And make sure that we are, um, funding this, not just with grants or with SIA money, but with general fund money.
Do you want to speak to that or are you, are you saying after the grant, hoping to reincorporate?
Well, and also it's a grant we have not yet received, so if we don't receive the grant, then what? Do we proceed with it out of general fund dollars this next year or what's the, what's the thinking on the district's part at this point?
So again, as highlight, these are expansion of current, um, efforts. So we already have, um, partnership with our Pacific Islander ERCO partners. This would be an expansion to the elementary grade, so it's not that we're stopping services. It's that we want to expand and understand more around the efficacy of programming. And then for, um. Uh, within, so we had heard from our listening sessions with our families, um, Arabic speaking. Um, have highlighted some potential gaps in practice and, um, ensuring inclusivity. Um, related to some of the service and supports within our, our community. And so, um, we, in partnership with GMEC. Um, I'm doing within our, uh, our budget, uh, a needs assessment. Um, to partner with GMEC to understand and do more listening sessions. And partnership with families and students to understand what the needs are, because very similar to what we had highlighted in our, um, equity audit. We understand where the gaps are, but then we have to also do a root cause analysis about where, where the specific gaps are. So we can have a targeted way of investing in like, um, initiatives, intervention and so forth and investments. So is that a viable, uh, next step? And I think that's part of the next step of equity audits is not just understanding where the gaps are, but what are we doing related to that? And so that's work that's already happening, this would just expand that, um, to support that work. And then we already have, um, current affinity and alliance groups, um, in do, in our equity, uh, funding from our SIA. We've learned a lot about, well, what has happened related to those equity proposals. A lot of the things that you see around, um, affirming. Identities or multicultural nights and, and being able to hear and listen and, and support our affinity to line, the lives that came from our equity audits. All the, I, I mean, our equity work. So we know there's some promising practices there. And the, uh, the space of our equity pillars that we spent most money on has been during, during the student pillar. Which makes sense because we're partnering with their students and making sure that they have direct connections to the work. But in analyzing that even more, a, a large chunk of the funding is actually also, um. Uh, paying and supporting staff time to help in the back, uh, behind the scenes, um. Uh, parts of, uh, like effective programming. And so we're using some of that funding within, I reallocated some of that funding within my budget to be able to support that. But I'd really like to expand that more, um, than just, uh, the targeted piece. And then our culture responsive coordinator, um, we are piloting that, um, this year. Um, in the middle schools and we're already finding some very promising practices related to implementing our Ish Plan. And related to education solutions and, um, healing. So these are the things that we're already doing, I think this is just. Hoping to expand that and understand more the efficacy of that programming when, when, um, funded more. I don't know, that was helpful.
So do you have any idea of your confidence in our getting this grant? Is it one of those things where the money is there and we just need to apply for it or is this a competitive grant?
I think it's a pretty competitive grant because it's, um. It's, uh, it's, the goal is, uh, to, uh, fund in the various regions. And so we are in the region where we were competing against, you know, districts, uh, in the Washington County, Multnomah County area. So it is pretty competitive, um, we have some, uh, that's why partnering with ERCO, I'm hoping to, um. Strengthen that we're going to get letter supports from them as well.
And my final question is, when do we anticipate finding out if we got it or didn't?
November, November. The, uh, it's due the nineteenth, they just gave information about it on the fifth of October.
This is a really exciting opportunity, so I'm glad to see it, thank you.
If there's no other questions, uh, entertain a motion.
And we'll approve the grant, uh, application request.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Director Himes and seconded by Vice Chair Irvin, is there any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll move to a call vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep us posted. And with that, we will move, uh, an exciting action item, Art Ruckin Elementary School Boundary Proposal and Involvement Report. Uh, with Director Tracy Rose, Director Rose. And Principal Kingery. And Director, Director Moore, we got the whole team.
Thank you, Chair Bowman, Directors. We're here this evening to share where we've been, where we are and where we are recommending that we go. Relative to the establishment of the Art Ruckin Elementary Attendance Boundary and building this new school community. We entered into this project with some assumptions around traditional neighboring school boundary adjustments to create the Ruckin Community. What we've learned is this process is far from traditional. As we continue to learn about the impacts of the ongoing and substantial housing development taking place and planned for. On our district's west side boundary, uh, borders. Our presentation will walk you through the influences on our decision-making and the impacts that have altered our plans to disrupt existing boundaries. As we've identified assumptions around current and future growth of our student population anticipated for Ruckin. Um, as you see, our considerations, uh, of adjustments to neighboring school boundaries, these are the impacts, um, of our decision-making. Identification of families living within the proposed boundary. Assumptions regarding enrollment from demographers report, assumptions regarding new families moving into the district. Impacts of housing development within the Ruckin boundary and impacts of the changing timelines for the Ruckin area development. Slide please. TTSD boundary considerations are guided by the following priorities. Adjustments informed by long-term community growth projections. Building and maintaining vibrant school communities, representing inclusive culturally diverse student populations. Distribution of student populations across the district. Sustaining K twelve feeder patterns from elementary to middle and high schools. Minimize the impact on schools, students and families. Transportation and transportation costs and identifying and engaging families most interested. And now I will turn it over to Jane to talk about the boundary.
Thank you. Um, so what we're looking at, um, up on this slide is the proposed attendance boundary for the new Art Ruckin Elementary. And you'll see that on the right-hand side represents the eastern border on a hundred, hundred and fiftieth avenue. On the north side of that blue area is Bull Mountain Road. And to the south is Beef Bend Road and then, uh, two, kind of. Two-thirds of the way through, uh, near the green square, um, is Roy Rogers Road. And then the attendance boundary, the proposed area would then extend, um, to the east to the borders of the Tiger Tall School District. Right there, and so, uh, the immediate neighbors are Alberta Rider, which is represented in that purple shaded area. And extends, um, outside of that area and then Deer Creek, which is the green, which has a portion that's above Beef Bend. And then more to the lower right, uh, portion to, or to the southeast of where Art Ruckin Elementary is. And Mary Woodward, which is the gray area up above that extends all the way, um, across Roy Rogers Road as well. Um, and so the goal is to open the school, uh, with, uh, least two hundred fifty to three hundred students. Um, and we'll get into why the numbers are that way, uh, based on kind of current, um, development and impact of that in that area. Um, currently in the, kind of the northwest, which is the upper right portion of the blue. Proposed attendance boundary area is about ninety-one current Alberta Rider students. And right now, those are students who are in, uh, kindergarten through fourth grade because that would represent, represent potential. Fifth grade students for next year, um, depending on how, uh, the families feel at that, uh, when the time comes. Uh, it would also include then new families, uh, pre-K five in the pending developments. Um, depending on the completion rates there. Uh, once enrollment would start, which looks like that would be somewhere around January, uh, after hiring a head secretary. And beginning that process, uh, pending approval. Um, and then it would, we would be responsive to what enrollment looks like. And what, how we would manage a plan moving forward to, um. Open the school with, again, looking at a two hundred fifty to three hundred, uh, student population. Uh, knowing that it will fill up, um, over those first few years, um, in the existing boundary. Um, highlighted, uh, there on the slide. And I think that represents basically our current situation right now for the attendance.
I'll go ahead. Um, what you see here is the River Terrace Development status. Uh, what we've done is we've identified areas one through four D and ten are now complete. Um, you'll see that those are more in the northern side of the district. Uh, areas five through nine are currently under construction and that equals one thousand four hundred and forty-four new units. And areas eleven, twelve and thirteen are under review or pre-application. Specific to Ruckin on this map, areas seven through twelve, which equal eight hundred and twenty-five units. Uh, next slide please. And this is just another, uh, visual for you, um, it's a, on the Tiger, uh, website. Where you can go in and click on the dots, um, but these are the dots that are identifying new development within both Ruckin. Um, and upwards north is, is the Woodward, uh, boundary as well.
Sure, and so, um, this represents kind of the, um, current demographics. Of the ninety-one students that were part of that northeast corner, uh, in the upper right of the proposed boundary area. Just to give a few kind of numbers of what that looks like. Um, I don't know if we want to go into anymore. Detail there, uh, otherwise I'll turn it over to David.
So, we tried to do a preliminary estimate of the, the total students that would be, uh, potentially entering. Uh, Art Ruckin in the fall of twenty-three, so. As you recall, or you may recall, we, um. Usually start off when we're talking about enrollment estimate, start off with our, our demographers, uh, estimate and. And the methodology the the demographer uses are those factors listed up here. Point oh six for apartment dwellers. So if there's. Of course, that's going to be an average. Um point one-two for attached dwellings, uh point two-five for a small lot detached home. And then point three-five for a middle or large lot detached home. Um in the Director Rose mentioned the the new construction of eight hundred and twenty-five units. Um we're saying here that that approximates a hundred and fifty students based on looking at. Uh the makeup of all of the different developments and using those factors above. And uh the ninety-one students in these existing homes and the the Art Rutkin Proposed Catchment Areas, ninety-one students. And then allowing uh two classrooms for pre-K. Uh so those numbers add up to two hundred and seventy-seven. And that number, I'd be very surprised if we come right on with that. It could. Be as low as two fifty and as high as three twenty-five. I I like to think in terms of ranges right now. Because there's too much uncertainty uh with uh how how fast they actually complete the construction. And uh where uh parents want their kids to go to school in the end.
I'm curious about the the ratios for students. That's just for elementary students that would be going to Rutkin.
It's just applied.
So there would presumably be more students that would be either middle schoolers or high school. But because those are new, smaller houses, I'm guessing we're assuming that it'll be young families moving into them with younger children. And so it'll be predominantly elementary schools. Is that correct?
Yeah, we we've been focused on. You know, the Art Rutkin issue. We haven't um looked globally at the other levels like we have here with the. The um the elementary level. But yeah, there there's potentially kids entering, more kids entering the middle and high school level too. And that'll, the demographer will have uh that information updated when we give that report to the board in January. He didn't have any updated information yet at this time.
Is it the end of your presentation?
Um so. Uh pending the approval to the attendance uh area, then that would allow for next steps to take place with uh community engagement. So starting to contact and provide information to existing families and uh those uh principals at schools, offices. So that we're able to make sure everybody has all the information they need for what's coming and what options may be available to them. Um depending on where they live. Um and then we will be uh looking at because of the uh slow pace. Um and how that has changed recently, the response would be then to offer some choice uh for families. Uh particularly um schools that may be at capacity, may have grade levels at capacity, which that picture will become more and more clear. As we get to as late as next August, um prior to uh opening Art Rutkin. And so again, going back to starting the ability to enroll for Art Rutkin in January, uh after the first of the year. And then responding to kind of what that picture looks like with all of the factors that we've talked about with construction, um progress. Existing families and uh and then families um option for choice that may be available. That we would then manage a process to uh do that in a in a way that works for everybody as best possible. And so uh next slide, please.
So we're here tonight. Board policy JC, school attendance areas requires a board vote to approve the proposal of the Art Rutkin Boundary. We're also looking for your green light to go ahead and begin this process and uh start uh assembling a new community for Art Rutkin. And the final slide is for us to discuss, but thought we would leave you with a picture of art.
I love that. That's really cool. Um I've got a few questions.
I remember the day that.
I've got a couple of questions to start us off. Um a couple of short ones. One, do you know the average ballpark size of our elementary schools currently in the system?
If. I guess if we had to put a number, it'd be somewhere around low five hundreds.
So this would be our, probably our smallest enrollment elementary school.
It would be starting out in the first year.
And then it's going to scale up.
And then each year, another year of construction and families moving in and build up to capacity. Uh especially with what's in store in Tigerd and then later on down the road with the King City Development.
And is the hope that we would open with classes K through five?
I pre-K five.
Pre-K, pre-K.
Ideally, uh we know based on previous experience, we'll see how that plays out. Fifth graders may be a little harder to get.
Sure.
Um just because they typically would like to stay with their finish up at the school where they're at. Um however, if we do get enough that move into the area and then uh some that uh choose to go, then that would be a bonus, I think. But um you know, we've.
Um.
We we feel like we're in a good place for a pre-K three, likely pre-K four, and we're hoping for still enough to be pre-K five.
That's awesome. Um and then. Thinking way out here, uh are these Tigerd High School kids? Or are these twelve high school kids? Or are these current swing zone?
Yeah, currently the uh feeder paths are maintained. And so this would be Art Rutkin Elementary, Twolletie Middle School, and Tigerd High School.
Okay. Um and then so, oh, oh.
Twolletie.
Sorry, twelve high school.
Twolletie.
So these would be part of the the commuter track students. Okay. Um. So you mentioned choice and I want to ask a little bit about what that might mean. So if we can go to the map, can you go to the map slide? So just a couple like hypotheticals to help illustrate what choice would look like. If someone lives just outside of the boundary, there's that street hawk ridge in the green right next to the blue. And they come to us and they say, I really want my kid to go to the new elementary school. Is it an automatic yes? Or is it a, we see what the situation looks like?
So um I think yes to almost all of it. Okay. I think it's a, it's a. Um we look at what the numbers are at the grade level, the student or students within the family may be. See what that looks like to existing enrollment at Art Rutkin Elementary. And what that looks like um similar to what the current process is in place. Because we wouldn't want to disrupt um staffing in a way that would force um something to go one way or the other. So we would want to look at all the factors utilizing the current process that we have and also um trying to get as many students into Art Rutkin to open up.
That's really helpful.
Classes.
And then the inverse question, is the same true inversely? Or does a student or a family have a right to stay at their current elementary school even if they're zoned into Rutkin?
And I think that part would fall on our current transfer, in-district transfer request process.
You'd apply through the district.
Correct.
Okay. And then my last question is. Um. Are we anticipating a broader boundary conversation district-wide this year or not necessarily?
Not this year. Not this year, but we do know, as we all know, that the development projects that are coming. Um across the district, we do need to work with our cities and get a real good understanding of what the impact's going to have on the broader district.
Okay.
So yes, those are coming.
At a later time. Great. Um thank you for the presentation. I appreciate all the thought that you put into this and this seems like a good plan to me. Other questions? Director Lynn, do you have any questions? No, thank you.
No.
Director Jaime.
That's a really dumb question. How are we going to differentiate between ARE and AR?
You're not the first one to bring that up.
AR.
That will fall on Director Bernard. Uh in in IT to make sure it works for staff email domain.
ART should be ART.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll we'll see where that lands. Yeah, we have had those discussions.
It's probably better than rut.
All right.
I move to approve the Art Rutkin Attendance Boundary and the committee's plan to begin the enrollment process as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Director Searchmead and seconded by Director Jaime. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a call vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh yeah. And with that, I'm actually going to, we're we're going to take a five-minute recess um and we'll be back at eight seventeen. All right, uh we will reconvene the meeting uh and jump directly back into the action item section of the agenda. Uh sorry, I forgot to tell you we were going back live. We're good. Okay. Uh and we will start with action item D, property tax exemption for low-income housing with presenter Director Moore.
This request is similar to the one we brought forward in the spring uh related to a senior low-income um. Housing project and the statute allows uh for uh nonprofit affordable housing developers. Like Reach Community Development Corporation request um exemption from property taxes for low-income housing projects. This particular one is located in Tigerd on Clinton Street. And um the. The city and the county have already approved this exemption. They have a blanket process they use. We could do the same thing. But I prefer to bring them one by one to you guys.
Yeah.
Um just so you can vote on each one of them. Um and uh our uh board's approval, the exemption would push. Push us, push the project over the fifty-one percent threshold as far as. Um the uh the taxes that that might be owed on the property. Um. So. Oftentimes uh boards would ask, well, what are we, you know, what what's the detriment to the district? And currently and prior, there hasn't been taxes paid on this property. It's been owned by the the um. The nonprofit. So um the only thing that would happen in the future is there would be that much less taxes going into the coppers for the state school fund. So it's not a dollar-for-dollar loss. It's spread throughout the state and like any other um nonprofit. Housing venture at any district around the state. So um there is a resolution. And all the the legalities are listed there, including references to the statute. Um so we're asking the board to consider Resolution twenty-two twenty-three dash zero five.
Questions? I have a question. I should know this. Is this permanent? Is this a permanent decision?
Yeah, so as long as, you know, it's owned by that entity and um they're using it for for affordable housing.
Yeah, affordable housing. Because I'm there, the the WoodSpring associate, the WoodSpring Apartments that we talked about.
Cause I'm there, the, the Woodspring associate, the Woodspring apartments that we talked about, they were purchased and shifted away from affordable housing. So if that happened here, we would be able to begin collecting property tax on them.
Yeah. That sounds good. Great. Any other questions? Go for it.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash zero five as submitted.
I second.
Motion was made by Vice Chair Irvin and seconded by Director Sershmi. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a quorum vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Director Lynn?
Aye, my apologies. I didn't, I didn't want to have it come.
No worries. Uh, all opposed, uh, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And we'll stick with Director Moore and we'll move to item E, STA, Transportation Services Contract Extension.
Uh, yes, so we're in the, the middle of a two-year extension from our original five-year contract with STA. And, um, we've, uh, talked about whether we're going to continue, uh, working with STA or, or open it up and do an RFP process. And, uh, have made the decision to bring forth the recommendation to extend the contract for another three years. And, um, as part of that, uh, discussion and negotiation, we, um, considered some, uh, improvements to the contract. Uh, the first being, uh, to upgrade the current audiovisual monitoring and recording system in our buses, um, that would really improve that system and allow for, uh, immediate download from the buses via wifi. Now it's a pretty extensive, uh, process just to get video when an incident occurs on the bus. Um, and, uh, this would be, um, in operation, uh, no later than, than July one, twenty-twenty-three, the new, uh, beginning year of a three-year, or the beginning point of a three-year extension. Um, also, um, currently, uh, STA uses, uh, both sites to park their buses on. And, uh, under the new contract, we would move, uh, most of the buses to the whole b- 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 bar site. And, um, the, the current agreement, um, includes, uh, services by the district to, to repair and, and do maintenance on the buildings and grounds. Uh, the amendment would include also, um, similar services to the asphalt, asphalt and, and gravel, uh, parking areas. And, um, in return for this, the contractor would pay the district fifteen hundred a month for all maintenance services. When the contract was initially put in place, uh, at the, the first five-year period, uh, we still owned money on that property. And part of the agreement was, is STA paid the debt. Um, and then when that ended, um, when there was any maintenance done on the, on the property by the district, um, under the contract, the provision was is we would build this in this arrangement. They're just going to pay us the fifteen hundred dollars automatically each month. And then on the, the Hundred and Thirtyth Avenue property, property out on Highway ninety-nine, uh, they would need to just park a limited number of buses on that property, um, as overflow from the the Hall Street property. And we would also allow them to access the propane fueling station. Um, so, um, we, we did have a fifteen hundred dollar a month, uh, maintenance or capital fee on that property. We're reducing it to five hundred because of they would be using less of that property for parking buses.
I'm going to stop there because that's the first part of the, the action item. See if there's any questions. No questions.
The other thing, the other item, uh, effective for the current year, uh, STA has requested, uh, under the contract, we were paying a, a six-point-eight percent increase, or excuse me, a five-point-nine percent increase based on the CPI of six-point-eight, the way that the current language reads. Uh, they have requested an additional two percent increase, uh, to help, uh, keep driver wages competitive, uh, with local districts. And, um, this would make our total rate increase in the current year seven-point-nine percent. Uh, we would still likely remain within budget, um, because we've been able to, to save some dollars by keeping routes, uh, lower than originally planned. So we'll, we'll still be within budget with this additional two percent increase in the current year.
Do we have a way, um, to guarantee that that extra two percent is going to salaries? Are we? I mean, I assume that's where that's.
Yeah, we, they showed us what the, the changes to the salary schedule would be based on that. And, um, they actually picked up Portland as a contract in the current year. Southwest side, Portland broke down their contract north and south. STA is doing the southwest side, but they've let us know that they haven't lost any drivers to Portland. And Portland's wages are, are much higher than the surrounding districts. Um, we are competitors like us. We go across the freeway basically and then for an STA client. And then also, you know, Beaverton and, and Westland-Wilsonville. So those are, that's our competition when it comes to drivers.
Good question. Was there more in your presentation?
No.
Other questions? All right, I would entertain a motion.
So before I make a motion, I do want to acknowledge I have heard from parents who are a little bit frustrated with our current bus system because there have been some delays this year. And I just want people watching to know that, um, part of this will hopefully ease our problems. We're having the same problems with our buses that everybody's having with their buses, which is to say they can't hire bus drivers. Um, so hopefully with the addition of two percent to salaries, we can, um, get more bus drivers and, and solve some of those problems with bus lines. So with that, I move to approve an additional two percent increase in rates with STA during twenty-two, twenty-three and a three-year contract extension with STA effective in July first, twenty-twenty-three, based on contract addendum as presented.
There a second? Second. All right, uh, motion was made by Director Sershmi and seconded by Director Himes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Thank you for bringing that up. I was debating whether to introduce that in the conversation, but I thought you did so nicely. I hope this helps. Uh, with that, we'll move to a quorum vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. With that, we'll move to item F, Twelton High School Baseball Netting Project. Uh, Directors Moore and Bernard.
Yes, recently we completed an invitation to bid process for, to replace the, the baseball, uh, netting system at the, the Twelton High Varsity Baseball Field. And, um, this, uh, replaces a, a system that was basically destroyed during the ice storm of February twenty-one. And, uh, is designed, redesigned to, uh, protect spectators in the property around, um, behind the baseball field, including the homeowners, the tennis court, wherever people are in, in line from foul balls, basically. And, um, we did receive, uh, three responses. The invitation to bid and included the bid, bid information in the board packet. And, uh, benchmark contracting is a low bid and is being recommended, um, to, uh, do this work. And I have my partner here, Director Bernard, cause he hopefully can answer questions about, um, you know, what this system consists of as far as a lot of support and a lot of expensive construction.
What exactly are we buying, Director Bernard? I think it's the questions.
We're essentially redoing, um, the existing backstop that's there. So a lot of it with the weight of that ice storm, um, in prior years, there was extensions in a net that were put on over the top to help with foul balls. When we had the ice storm, the weight of the ice pretty much took the old backstop U-shape and just kind of, it all caved in on itself. Those poles cannot be reused. And so there's a replacement of those poles. Those poles will be cut off at a certain level above ground or reuse portions of those to do, uh, to use as part of that system. But essentially it's going to open up, have new poles put in, netting that is, you see a lot of the current, um, baseball backstops. You see a lot of net versus the cyclone fencing that we currently have. So it's better visibility and things like that. Um, it'll go all the way down. The netting will then go all the way down first baseline. So like currently, we're getting a lot of foul balls or going into homes. We're continually repairing windows, roofs, siding, you name it, on cars, um, and things like that. So this will hopefully reduce that substantially. And, um, there's some poles, large poles there that were abandoned, um, at some time over the last several years, decade. Um, so we're trying to reuse what we can, but we can, but unfortunately, there's very little that we can reuse of that system. So location-wise is a challenge to get a crane up there, find the equipment, um, very little. There's a walking path, but not much room between the dugouts to get equipment with the turf and things like that. So it's a challenging site. Thus the, um, amounts that you see there. One thing with the recommendation to benchmark contracting, they are the company that did the install of the turf, writ, the turf that's their existence. They're very familiar with our property up there, that location in particular. And, um, so, so anyway, we've worked with them in the past quite a bit.
This is the one just above the football field, like that first layer of.
Yeah, so kind of behind the tennis courts.
Yeah.
Yeah, up there, yeah.
My, my only question on this is, I mean, it's a big price tag, but I imagine that's, if that's the best bid, it was, you know, there's other options, but is it, you know, if another ice storm happens next year, is this, do we have any sort of warranty or guarantee that the, the construction of this new facility is not going to be vulnerable to the same kind of damage?
I, I don't know if we can predict that. Uh, I think, you know, it's being engineered to withstand that. And so, um, with the netting, I think there's also the potential to, we knew something was coming along the way. You'd have potential to bring certain netting, you know, certain sections of it down.
Okay.
And, um, and so we'll just have to take a look at that and see, but it definitely will not, it will, you know, it's being designed to stand up this. The, um, infrastructure is going to be more substantial than what's there. And, um,
Is there an, an expected lifespan of this kind of a thing?
You know, I would, I'd have to go a little bit more further.
Let's go.
Read in that a lot of it, you know, with netting, you're probably susceptible to a little bit more vandalism and things like that. A lot of districts around us have netting and it's been there for years. Knock on wood that, you know, ours will be the same.
Well, it sounds like a, a smart safety upgrade for us.
Um, I appreciate that the person who was the, the contractor who was the low bidder is one that we've worked with before. That's always heartening. Um, I am a little concerned that the price between the high bid and the low bid was so high and was almost double. Um, do you have any idea why the bids varied so much is, was, was Benchmark able to give us a better price in part because they knew what the site was or what was it?
Yeah, good, great question. I think part of it was on the initial walk with all of our contractors, the, um, location and challenge to get equipment in there. I think you'll see reflected in those placings. I heard some of the contractors saying as much as five hundred thousand dollars to get a crane in there. Just to mobilize a crane, have the crane there. And so, um, when we're hearing those numbers, and then when I saw these numbers, the, the bids that came in, I was quite surprised after just the, you know, the fluid conversation we're having on site. Re- originally, our low estimates were around, you know, between three fifty to four hundred thousand, um, for this system. So you see it's quite a bit higher. But I think the fact, the main factor in there is just this, the location, the challenge of getting the size of equipment they need up there in such a small, tight space.
That makes a lot of sense. And I'm also, I know a couple of people who own houses along that, uh, first baseline. And I know they'll be very grateful to have the, the bigger net.
Yes.
It's a bit of a standing joke.
All right. Other questions or a motion?
I move to award a contract to Benchmark Contracting Incorporated for the Twelton High Baseball Netting for a contract amount of five hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars.
I second. Motion was made by Vice Chair Irvin and reluctantly seconded by Director Himes. Uh, is there a further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a quorum vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Bernard and Director Moore. Financial Oversight Committee appointment.
So earlier this year, we had, uh, a member of our financial oversight committee that, um, moved outside of the district. So had to re- resign his position, Gilberto Salas. And, um, back in June of twenty-one, we did a pretty extensive process and had, um, several applicants, I think at least a half dozen, uh, that we, uh, accepted applications from and interviewed. And, uh, I proposed to Chair Bowman and Dr. Ricky Smith that we consider that pool of applicants instead of opening it up again, because we had some pretty stellar applicants, um, back in twenty-one and, uh, asked Jim Kelleher if we'd be interested in still being appointed. And he said he would. So Jim is our, uh, recommendation this evening, uh, for a, a term ending June of twenty-twenty-four to be, uh, appointed to the Financial Oversight Committee. And hopefully you got a chance to look at his application that was included with materials.
Some of you probably know Jim, highly qualified for this, thirty years of experience in corporate finance, commercial and investment banking, and now works as a retirement plan administrator. So I think she'll bring a lot to the table for that committee. Questions for Director Moore?
I move to appoint Jim Kelleher to the Financial Oversight Committee for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. Motion was made by Director Sershmi and seconded by Director Himes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a quorum vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Moore. Uh, so we do actually have one, uh, non-agenda public comment item. So one second and I will get our script prepared here. All right, so, uh, Mr. Niemeyer, uh, you can come on up. And while you're walking up, I will read the, the rules for public comment, just so we're all on the same page. Uh, the Tiger Twelve and School Board, Tiger Twelve and School Board meetings are public meetings, meaning that the business of the board is conducted in an open meeting for the public to observe as required by law. However, regular public comment at board meetings is a policy choice of the school board, not a legal requirement. As the board values input from our students, parents and district community members that we serve, the, the board provides these opportunities for community members to provide input on important topics. In addition to public comment, community members may submit written comments to the board secretary at each meeting or email comments directly to school board members. Email addresses of board members can be found on the district website. All right, public comments are limited to three minutes each and should be brief and concise as per board policy. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations or programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning specific district personnel. We are also unable to hear praise or commendation about specific district personnel, but invite, uh, you to submit commendations to the superintendent. Before you start your comments, please show your zip code so we know whether you're a constituent or not. Um, although I think I know that you're a constituent.
Yes.
Uh, Director Zershmi will be timing this evening. Uh, so she'll hold a one-minute symbol up when you have one minute left. Uh, and then you'll hear her alarm, uh, when you hear her alarm go off.
Very, very much like Toastmasters.
Yeah, you should, you probably know the, know the drill.
Yes.
Um, if you have more comments than what the three minutes will allow, you can email them to, uh, Patty Roberts. And Patty will send them to the full board and they'll be included in the meeting minutes for the. If you have more comments than what the three minutes will allow, you can email them to Patty Roberts and Patty will send them to the full board and they'll be included in the meeting minutes for the public record. And also it's important to note, as per board policy, this is not an opportunity for the board to engage in conversation. Rather, this is an opportunity for the board to listen to community members. So we don't engage in dialogue, but we do have the ability to refer district staff to follow up with you afterwards if there are specific questions that are raised.
Okay.
Great. Well, with that.
Is it okay to say it's good to see you again?
Say it again. Oh, yes, it, yes, it's, it's good to see you too. So with that, take your time and whenever you begin speaking, that's when Director Zershmi will start the timing. Thank you.
To start with, thank you for having, letting me be able to talk tonight. During our conversations, when we were at the Tigerd or at
I'm, I'm sorry.
We actually praised some things that I had done in the past. I very much appreciated that. That had a lot to do with vocational education that I grew up with. The last time I've been at a, a school board meeting was in 'oh three, when my kids were going through here. And back then there was a great deal of vocational education available for a wide variety of different directions for people to go in. And looking into what's going on right now, I don't see that happening practically at all in comparison to 19 years ago. I'm kind of disappointed to see how, how little vocational education is actually available. You know, I'd like to see more shop classes, for instance. I know that Tigerd had a little machine shop at one time. I do not know if it's still there, but it was when my son went to Tigerd High School. And we actually used a little bit of, to make a few parts for the first products program. Now, well, I just am kind of disappointed at how much vocational education just doesn't exist anymore. And I'm not sure what to do about it. And again, it has been 19 years since I've had to deal with anything. Pretty much I'm the only one that's giving my kids an opportunity to learn things, to do with their hands, a different skill that will help them get jobs in the future. So like I say, that's my input is that I'm quite disappointed in how little vocational education has, has disappeared in, in the schools. And the other thing to tie that together with is I, I tend to believe that the I tend to believe that college curriculums and things like that have actually been degraded and that a lot of the college degrees that the people are getting today are just kind of useless. And we should have, in looking at the vocational opportunities in high school, even maybe in the grade school to prevent a student from going into college activities that will not really lead to a profession eventually. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your public comment.
Would you please just state your name and your zip code for the record?
Yeah. Yes, my name is Bob Niemeyer, 97223.
Thank you, Mr. Niemeyer. And I will ask district staff to please follow up with Mr. Niemeyer. And perhaps we should give him a tour of the auto shop. So I think you'll be pleasantly surprised, Mr. Niemeyer, when you see the full selection of CTE courses we've offered. But we'll have district staff follow up so that you're able to see those for yourself.